Six thirty, again. Call a meeting to order, let's stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler?
Here.
Counselor Jelly?
Here.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Here.
Mayor Boucher?
Here. Any announcements this evening? None from the group? I'd like to wish, give our best to the Mirage in their first game tomorrow night at state tournament.
Seconded.
We have no public hearings, communications are listed. Mr. Mulder, could you give us a short synopsis of the presentations we've had at the agenda?
So we did some annual reviews, both for police and fire and the public safety department, just in terms of the level of activity for the department, the various programs that the departments have. And then Eric followed that with a kind of an end review of the P and work of the P and planning and zoning commission and community development department. Finally, I ended with just kind of reviewing the city council priority discussion and reviewing the draft priority statements for the city council for the next two to four years.
Thank you. Next, we have public discussion. This is the time that any individual can address the council about items not on the agenda. We ask that you limit your time to three minutes per person. If you're here for a specific item on the agenda, there will be a public discussion period during that item's consideration. If anyone wishes to speak to the council, please step forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Shannon Prul and our address is forty-nine zero-five Wild Rose Trail. Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Shannon. This is my husband, Mark Prul. Thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. We ask the council to consider amending the city of Hermantown's regulations to allow accessory dwelling units or ADUs. As housing costs continue to rise, many communities have recognized the benefits of ADUs. These units offer versatile housing solutions that can meet a range of needs within our community. We would like to build a thousand square foot detached ADU on our property. This unit is designed with flexibility in mind. It could serve as a permanent home for our elderly parents, ensuring they have a secure and comfortable living environment close to family support. At the same time, the ADU could be utilized for short or long-term rental, thereby contributing to the housing supply and bolstering our local economy. Allowing ADUs in our city would give homeowners more choices while promoting responsible development. We encourage the council to explore this opportunity, listen to community input, and consider policies that support property owners while balancing community needs. Thank you for your time and your leadership, and we appreciate your consideration and look forward to further discussions on this topic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the council about anything in general that's not on our agenda? Anyone online? No. Last opportunity for general public discussion. If anyone wishes to address the council, please step forward to the podium and state your name and address. Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda is the minutes approval or correction of the February third, twenty-twenty-five city council continuation minutes and accounts payable approved general city warrants from February first, twenty-twenty-five through February fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five in the amount of four hundred thirty-two thousand, seven hundred twenty-nine dollars and thirty cents. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor LeBlanc. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Geisler. Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor, Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is ordinances, a second reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash zero-four. An ordinance amending chapter two definitions. Is there a motion relating to this ordinance?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Jelly. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Geisler. Mr. Mulder?
I'm gonna let Eric speak to all of the ordinances that are related to the environmental review.
Mr. Johnson?
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and council members. As you mentioned, this is a number of ordinances associated with environmental review standards and procedures. Currently, the city ordinance does reference a number of these things, but it lists specific language associated in each zoning section. So the main purpose of this is to provide some clarity and transparency throughout this process. So a number of instances, instead of having direct language, we actually refer back to the Minnesota state statute four-four-one-zero, which governs these environmental processes. Basically, it gives triggers as to when a document such as an environmental assessment worksheet, environmental impact statement, or what's called an alternative urban area-wide review are necessitated. So once again, we're taking out specific language that would have to be changed every year, much similar like we have with the building code, and just reference back to the state statute. In addition to that, the, as part of the chapter twenty-three, which will be two more ordinances down from this, we're creating a brand-new zoning chapter for environmental review. Once again, it provides the processes that how you would, when EAWs, these different documents are required, the different steps that the city's involved with as well as potential developer. But lastly as well, it provides a fee schedule of each one of these documents. Right now, we have no such fee schedule. What we're required to do at that point is have individual negotiations with each developer. So once again, provide some clarity and transparency on how the process works.
Thank you. Have you covered then the first four ordinances we're going to deal with this evening?
I can. I'd be happy to read.
Well, no, we'll go, we'll go through them one at a time.
Sure, thank you.
Any questions or comments from council?
My only concern is whenever we're changing an ordinance or adding an ordinance, are we adding layers for these developers to go through, or is this more of a clarification for those?
It's more of a clarification because right now, they are required by state statute when they reach these certain thresholds that they have to do those things. And we as a city reforms what's called the regulatory governmental unit, so we're in charge of actually overseeing that process.
Alright. Any other questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there any public input on this ordinance? Any public input on ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash zero-four? Is there any public input on an ordinance amending chapter two definitions? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash oh-five. Second reading of ordinance amending chapter five, land use regulations. Do we have a motion relating to this ordinance?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc. Mr. Johnson, is there anything to add to this? Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this ordinance? Is there any public input on the ordinance amending chapter five land use regulations? Still no one online, Joe? Any public input on ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash zero-five? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is the second reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash zero-six. An ordinance amending chapter eleven, planned unit development. Is there a motion relating to this ordinance?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Jelly. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Geisler. Mr. Johnson, anything to add on this one? Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this ordinance? Do we have any public input on ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash zero-six? Is there any public input on an ordinance amending chapter eleven, planned unit development? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is the second reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash zero-seven. An ordinance of the city of Hermantown, Minnesota, amending the zoning code, adding chapter twenty-three, environmental review. Is there a motion relating to this ordinance?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Geisler. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc. Mr. Johnson?
As I had mentioned previously, this is where it actually lays out the processes and steps associated with each one of these environmental documents, and also sets up those different associated fees associated with those.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there any public input on this ordinance? Is there any public input on ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash zero-seven? Do we have any public input on the ordinance of the city of Hermantown amending the zoning code, adding chapter twenty-three, environmental review? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is the second reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash zero-eight. An ordinance amending code of ordinances, section two-seventy, fee schedule. And I believe this is adding the pass-through fee from the city of Duluth of seven dollars and fifty cents for water. Is there anything else in that?
That's it.
Do we have a motion relating to this ordinance?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Geisler. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc. Any questions or comments from council?
It's unfortunate.
Yes. My only comment is, over fifteen years, the life of this fee, it will generate three million dollars to the city of Duluth to pay for water system improvements.
Probably also important to note that the city of Hermantown is not making any money off of this. It's
Correct.
Totally just a pass-through.
And this fee is also going to be applicable to Procter and Rice Lake and the city of Duluth residents. Anything else from council? Any public input on this ordinance? Any public input on the ordinance amending the Hermantown code of ordinances, section two-seventy, fee schedule? Any public input on ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash zero-eight? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is the first reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash zero-nine. An ordinance amending and restating chapter fifteen floodplain management regulations of the Hermantown zoning code. We will not be voting on this this evening. There will be a second reading at our next meeting. Mr. Johnson, do you have a short description of this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council members. FEMA has been working for the past year, year and a half on the update of their basically floodplain maps, their firm panels, of which they call those. And associated with that, they're requiring that the city enact an updated ordinance reflecting these changes in order to participate in their national flood insurance program. City staff worked with the city attorney comparing our existing ordinances to the DNR, basically model ordinance. We've recommended changes that are in this document with the new ordinance being the fact that it has some more definitions, includes more diagrams and figures. It also gets into some different definitions of when these floodplain requirements are required particularly, as it has to do with infrastructure as well as manufactured homes or RVs. Once again, this is a lot of work between city staff as well as the DNR and federal policies. And the city does have these new maps as well.
Thank you. We won't be voting, but is there any comment from council?
Any drastic changes to Hermantown?
For the most part, I think it stayed pretty much the same. They had the ability to do a lot more individual modeling, so they're able to tighten some things up. They still have the ability to do what's called LOMARS, which are letter of map revisions. So in some individual cases, if an existing home, they have some specific questions about it, they have the ability to individually map their particular property to determine if they're in or out of that floodplain.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this ordinance? Any public input on the ordinance amending and restating chapter fifteen floodplain management regulations? And any public input on ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash zero-nine? Hearing none, we will move on to resolutions. Resolution two thousand twenty-five dash twenty-eight. Resolution awarding contract for a purchase of two police vehicles in the amount of one hundred five thousand, four hundred seventy-six dollars and fifty-six cents plus applicable taxes and fees. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Counselor LeBlanc to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Geisler. Mr. Mulder?
Each year, we buy two new squads to add to our fleet, and we retire two of the squads in the police department fleet as well. So this is the purchase of those two squads that was included in the budget.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
I think Chief Kreis cleared this up, but it's two cars for a total of one oh-five, right?
Correct.
Because the wording's a little vague, I guess, in my mind.
And that is on the state bid?
Yeah.
I just want to comment that I remember our first squad car purchased as a city in nineteen-seventy-seven being five thousand dollars. Any other comments from council?
Cracked windows, though.
No, no AC either, really.
And an AM radio. Roll call, please. Oh, wait, we have to have public, we're gonna have public input on buying two police cars. Any public input on this ordinance, on this resolution? Any public input on the resolution awarding the purchase of two police vehicles? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-five dash twenty-eight? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-five dash twenty-nine. Resolution authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver a joint powers agreement between the Bureau of Criminal Apprehension, BCA, and the city of Hermantown. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Geisler. Mr. Mulder?
This is specifically for the Minnesota Anti-Heroine Task Force. This allows us to participate with the state and then also get reimbursed for some overtime investigations as well.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
Anytime we can charge our time to somebody else is a good thing.
And anytime we get someone else to help us with investigations is good.
Also a good thing.
Any other questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-five dash twenty-nine? Is there any public input on the resolution authorizing a joint powers agreement between the Bureau of Criminal Apprehension and the city of Hermantown? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-five dash thirty, resolution authorizing a summary of an ordinance amending Hermantown city code of ordinances by amending chapter two definitions. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by
I'll second it.
Counselor LeBlanc, second by Counselor Geisler. This is just the publication of a short version of the ordinance. Mr. Mulder?
Yeah, so the next three resolutions are all just summaries of lengthy ordinances that we can publish, the summaries instead of the lengthy ordinance.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Any public input on this resolution? Any public input on the resolution authorizing publishing of a summary of an ordinance amending the zoning code by amending chapter two definition? Is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-five dash thirty? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-five dash thirty-one. Resolution authorizing a summary of an ordinance amending Hermantown zoning code of ordinances by amending chapter five, land use regulations. Do we have a motion relating to this, to this resolution?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Geisler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc. Any questions or comments from council? Any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-five dash thirty-one? Any public input on the resolution authorizing a summary of an ordinance amending Hermantown zoning code of ordinances by amending chapter five, land use regulations? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-five dash thirty-two. Resolution authorizing a summary of an ordinance amending Hermantown zoning code of ordinances by amending chapter eleven, planned unit development. Is there a motion relating to this resolution?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Geisler. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-five dash thirty-two? Any public input on the resolution authorizing a summary of an ordinance amending Hermantown zoning code of ordinances by amending chapter eleven, planned unit development? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-five dash thirty-three. Resolution authorizing and directing mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver purchase agreement for fireworks from flashing thunder fireworks. Do we have a motion relating to this?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc. Mr. Mulder, do we want Mr. Wicklund to explain this one?
Sure.
Mr. Wicklund?
Mayor and councillors, it is with a great deal of excitement. We talk about a big anniversary slash birthday on December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, fifty years earlier. This township of Herman officially became the city of Hermantown, and this year, we plan on celebrating it with a New Year's Eve birthday fireworks display at Fichtner Park.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? It's a good thing to recognize our fifty years. Any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-five dash thirty-three? Any public input on the purchase agreement for fireworks? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-five dash thirty-four. Resolution authorizing, authorizing and directing mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver purchase agreement for bat and helmet racks and equipment bag hooks for dugouts from baseballracks.com. Is there a motion relating to this resolution?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jelly. Mr. Mulder?
So this is authorizing us to purchase various furniture fixture and equipment for Fichtner Park specifically for the dugouts. I'm gonna have that ready for the first game sometime in April.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-five dash thirty-four? Any public input on the resolution to purchase bat and helmet racks and equipment bag hooks for dugouts? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-five dash thirty-five. Resolution authorizing and directing mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver purchase agreement for signage in Fichtner Park. Do we have a motion relating to this resolution?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Jelly. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc. Mr. Mulder, do we want Mr. Wicklund to touch on this one?
Sure.
Mr. Wicklund?
In this case, we've worked with outside sponsors to find naming rights for the park, one of which we finalized a few weeks ago through Centrist Credit Union and other, we're hoping to wrap up soon. These signages will provide some of the marketing pieces for those naming sponsors. In addition, these will also be the signs for the park itself, being able to direct traffic inside the park and obviously notarize those philanthropic givers.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-five dash thirty-five? Any public input on the resolution to have a purchase agreement for signage in Fichtner Park? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-five dash thirty-six. Resolution authorizing and directing mayor and city clerk to execute an acceptance of easement agreement to the city of Hermantown from Joan M. Rowe and Johnny L. Rowe for the Hermantown Trail Project. Do we have a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc. And this and the following three items are all easement agreements. Mr. Mulder, should we have Ms. Kragel?
Sure.
Thank you. Do we, any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-five dash thirty-six? Any public input on the acceptance of an easement agreement with Joan M. Rowe and Johnny L. Rowe? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-five dash thirty-seven. Resolution authorizing and directing mayor and city clerk to execute an acceptance of easement agreement to the city of Hermantown from Robert A. Carlson for the Hermantown Trail Project. Is there a motion relating to this resolution?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor LeBlanc. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Geisler. Are there any questions or comments from council? With none, is there any public input on this resolution? With none, is there any public input on this resolution? Is there any public input on Resolution 2025-37? Is there any public input on the easement agreement between the City of Hermantown and Robert A. Carlson? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is Resolution 2025-38, Resolution Authorizing and Directing Mayor and City Clerk to Execute an Acceptance of Easement Agreement to the City of Hermantown from Christine L. Fairbanks and Stephen D. Fairbanks for the Hermantown Trail Project. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Geisler. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jelly. Any questions or comments from council on this resolution? Hearing none, is there any public input on this resolution? Is there any public input on Resolution 2025-38? Do we have any public input on the easement agreement between the City of Hermantown and Christine L. Fairbanks and Stephen D. Fairbanks? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is Resolution 2025-39, Resolution Authorizing and Directing Mayor and City Clerk to Execute an Acceptance of Easement Agreement to the City of Hermantown from Harland G. Newman for the Hermantown Trail Project. Is there a motion relating to this resolution?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Geisler. Any questions or comments from council on this resolution? Do we have any public input on this resolution? Do we have any public input on Resolution 2025-39? Any public input on the acceptance of an easement agreement between the City of Hermantown and Harland G. Newman? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is Resolution 2025-40, Resolution Approving a Scope of Work and Ordering Advertisement for Bids for the Roof and Roof Insulation on the City of Hermantown Public Works Facility. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Geisler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc. Mr. Mulder, do you want to explain this, or do you want Mr. whole?
I'll try, but this is basically, we're looking for bids to repair the roof at the Public Works Facility on Lightning Drive. Once we receive those bids, we'll review with the insurance company before we would present those to the City Council for an award.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on Resolution 2025-40? Any public input on the resolution advertising for bids for the roof and roof insulation on the City of Hermantown Public Works Facility? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is Resolution 2025-41, Resolution Authorizing and Directing the Building Official to Advertise Request for Proposals to Provide Professional Design Services for the City Hall HVAC Repairs and Upgrades. Do we have a motion relating to this?
I'll move to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Geisler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jelly. Mr. Mulder?
So, again, we are looking at hiring a, doing an RFP, getting proposals for designing the HVAC for this building, and doing, for doing repairs.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there any public input on this resolution? Do we have any public input on Resolution 2025-41? Is there any public input on the request for proposals to provide professional design services for the City Hall HVAC repairs and upgrades? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. And do we have a need for a closed session this evening? Well, then, next, we would need a motion to recess. Do we have that motion?
I'll move to recess.
Motion by Counselor LeBlanc to recess. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jelly with a smile on his face. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Does anybody want to stay?